Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Open Meeting. Today is Monday, November 6th. Let's see. Generally, meetings of the Berlin Select Board are recorded and transmitted on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and/or phone number will be recorded. All right. So, we are exactly 7:00. Call to order. Unfortunately, one of our mates is not doing well tonight, so it'll just be Scott and I holding down the fort. So, let's do... We're gonna go out of order. And what I would like to do is talk about a notice of intent to appoint to a full-time police officer, Mr. Scott Davis.
Okay.
I was gonna say.
Sorry. I thought he was here.
Okay. So, while he's gone, let's back up. You want to just do the approval of the minutes?
Yeah. The minutes look fine by me. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded? And a vote?
All in favor of aye?
Aye.
There we go.
We are approved. Hearing the pitter-patter of feet.
Five minutes. We're waiting for Mr. Davis's parents to arrive.
Alrighty. Alright. Then we'll just back up and we'll go around again. Alright. So, we will do any general public comments. Seeing none? If you don't mind, we'll skip over you guys, because I have a feeling it'll take more than five minutes for your tax classification. Alright. Kristin, how quickly can you go through your TA report?
You can start.
And if we have to stop, then we'll pick you up.
Absolutely. Which is now on television. Hold on. Oh, now I lost the cord. I've gotta move it a little closer for me to be able to see it. Okay. Let me just get out of the tax classification hearing. So, we are full swing into budget season. So, the FY '25 budget will be a standing item on the Select Board, on the Town Administrator Reports for the Select Board going forward. We had a large budget workshop sponsored by the School Committee with representatives from the Berlin and Boylston Select Boards, Finance Committees, and Town Administrators on October 24th. They did provide some very preliminary information on needs and cost estimates, which include an anticipated 10% increase in the operating budget and $3 million in capital needs for the town of Berlin alone, as our free cash was certified at just over 1.77 million. And our free cash policy allows 30% to be set aside for capital, which is just over half a million. There's clearly insufficient free cash for this request, even before including town needs. So, for the capital needs that include urgent building maintenance requests, such as the roof at Berlin Memorial, the town may have to look to a debt exclusion for funding. So, the treasure collector and I did meet with our financial advisor at Unibank this past week and requested some preliminary numbers on what that would look like, just to get a sense. And we should have those... Actually, got them in this afternoon, but I haven't had a chance to review them yet. Also, the Personnel Committee met on October 25th and November 1st to recommend a 2% COLA and market rate adjustments. They agreed with my recommendation to take a conservative approach initially at 2%, with the possibility of revisiting that amount once the preliminary budget is set. I think it makes the most sense to go conservative in the beginning and see how everything works out. So, the FinCom did meet again on November 1st. We finalized the budget packet that will go out on November 13th to everybody, boards and committees, and town departments. As I mentioned at the last meeting, on the town side, the early immediate needs that we've identified so far are largely related to staffing in departments, including highway, social services, police, and fire. I'm also happy to report that we have a full slate on the FinCom of five members, as the FinCom voted unanimously to appoint Shane Ross for a three-year term. Unfortunately, I have to report some not-so-great news. We did meet with our insurer, Maya, to discuss potential health insurance increases, and this is based on our claims and where we're at. The data is pointing to the need to increase the benefits budget by 10% to 12% in FY '25. There is possible plan redesign options as part of that, that we will be looking at going forward, and we'll be discussing this with the IAC. And the Administrative Finance Team continued to meet over the last few weeks to go over the recap sheet and the tax rate in preparation for this evening's hearing. I can report that this is very surprising, but also not so surprising if you follow the market, that the average single-family home value in Berlin has risen by nearly $100,000 since FY '23. And for FY '24, tax bills will be going up between $650 and $700 on average. We had estimated around 600, but as we said last year over and over again, just an estimate, just an estimate, because when you run it through the split tax rate and you look at commercial devaluation and residential home price increases, it's very difficult to estimate that in advance. So, that's where we stand there. Do you want me to keep going, or you want me to pause?
Why don't we pause?
Sounds like a good spot to pause, yeah.
Okay. So, everyone's here?
There's like 50 questions.
Alright. So, let us go back to our notice of intent to appoint Scott Davis as our full-time, or our full-time police officer town of Berlin. Mr. Schatner, if you wanna... Chief Schatner, if you wanna come up?
We have a special guest as well.
And we have a special guest?
Yep. We have multiple guests.
We have multiple guests?
We do. We do. So, Scott grew up in Auburn, spent the last 16 years with Auburn Fire, 10 or 11 as paramedic, the last seven on our regional SWAT team as a SWAT medic. Part of the hiring process, we got a lot of applicants. Scott came out on top, and he also comes academy-trained. So, and shocked me to see how many people were here tonight. So, yeah, this is Scott, and we look forward to taking him on board. He starts next Monday.
Awesome. Eloise?
I didn't know if you could... I can swear him in after you appoint him.
Right. You have to appoint.
May I get a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint him as a new full-time police officer.
Gladly seconded.
Great first name, too. I like it.
It is seconded, and can we have a vote?
Aye.
And aye. Unanimous. Alright, Eloise, you're up.
Scott Davis, you having been appointed to the Berlin Police, do swear that you will perform the duties of this office to the best of your knowledge and ability to help you go.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to sign in here, because that's... So, here you just put "Police." You sign that.
Yep.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations. Anything else to say, Chief Schatner?
We have two more coming on board in the next couple of weeks, and then as soon as he passes the background check, he's next Monday night.
Nice.
We're still waiting for the background check on Jax.
Can we get a preliminary introduction?
Yeah. Yeah. Bring him forward.
Bring him forward. That's right. Just gonna cut him on camera.
Can't bring him up here and not introduce him.
This is true.
This is Jax. He's eight weeks old. He's an English Chocolate Lab. I picked him up yesterday, so he'll be going through some training for, to get certified as a comfort dog for the town of Berlin. And next week, he'll be getting sworn in.
Great.
That's so awesome. Thank you so much for doing that. He's gonna be a great benefit to this town.
He just woke up, so he's a little bit out of it.
Cool. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the family for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Alright.
You're welcome, too. You're welcome, too. Just a highest slide. I think due to the tax hearing, they come back to questions.
Yeah. Let's do the tax hearing. Alright. So, wait till the dogs get out the door?
Yep. Before you could start queuing up the slides.
Yes.
Because I looked for them at the table, like, oh, because it was tied.
This is why you're not near a microphone, Mr. Pond.
People want...
Alright. Well, once again, we are yet gonna have another change in our agenda, because, well, that's what we do. So, come on down, Ms. Linda. We will open the hearing at 7:10 on November 6th to talk about the FY '25 tax classification hearing. Linda, if you'd like to come up and take the hot seat?
We'd love to take that hot seat.
I know that.
And actually, the Town Administrator portion of the report that I did kind of queued this up nicely, because we talked about where we were at in the last couple of weeks, so...
Before we start, Linda, it's a pleasure to meet you. This is my first chance to meet you. Welcome aboard. Scott, have you met?
I don't think so. Scott.
Could you, for us and for the folks on camera, tell us just a 30-second elevator spiel? Where you come from, who you are, settling in in Berlin, goals that you want for your department? How was that for unplanned?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Linda Barisha, and I'm the Director of Assessing for the Town of Berlin. I used to work for the Town of Leicester as a Principal Assessor for a couple of years, and also before that for the City of Worcester. I was an Assistant Assessor, an Admin Assistant, so I started from the bottom and up. I did graduate from Banker College in Worcester, had my Bachelors and Masters there. I am an accredited assessor from the Mass Assessors Associations. The transition to the Town of Berlin has been pretty smooth.
Settling in?
Yes. I do have a lot of goals, but I'm still working on it. I think maybe by next year, I'll have them all ready, because this was not planned, and I do apologize.
Don't worry about it. No, I just wanted, you know, the folks on camera to have an opportunity, so when they come to the assessors, everyone, of course, knows the lovely Kevin Pond, but to be able to put a name with a face. So, thank you. Thank you for the impromptu quick discussion. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. You're up.
Okay. Linda, what I've done is I pulled the presentation up here on the screen for you, so I can advance it just like...
Okay. Yes. So, this is just a property classification hearing. Most of the slides are the same as previous years. Those are just the general laws, how the valuation is done, how we get approved by the DOR. We citing the Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, that allow a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the total tax levy as voted by the town meeting. It simply determines the share borne by each class. This is just the role of the assessor and how the values for FY 2024 were calculated. It was the review for the sales of 2021 and 2022 for Class 3 and 4. This usually happen if we do not have enough of sales for a certain category, then by law, we can go up to two years.
And typically, in Berlin, there's not enough sales in any one class. That's why you typically do two years.
Yes, correct. In most of the towns around, that's what we do usually, and the condos, in some cases, that we have to look for two years. And then my office, administrative abatement, exemption, excise, and of course, the classification hearing for the Board of Selectmen once a year. And what the classification hearing does not do, the classification hearing does not determine the tax rate. It only determines the distribution between tax classes. The tax levies determine by town meeting appropriation and state and county charges. This is also how the purpose of the public tax classification hearing, Select Board, to adopt the town's tax policy by the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real and personal property for fiscal year 2024. Tonight, the Select Board will discuss the tax rate policy as a uniform or split tax rate, open space, discount residential exemption, and small commercial exemption. So, property classification, it's residential and open space, and the CIP includes commercial, industrial, and personal. So, these are the values for FY '24, how much we are going to collect in each different class, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal, and the total will be...
I found this... I found that particular stat amazing, that in the Town of Berlin, if you take the value of the houses and the commercial property and the other stuff, that we're nearing a billion dollars worth of value in this town. We think of this as this tiny little town. There's a billion dollars worth of value of stuff in this town. And that doesn't count, like, again, stuff owned by the town or owned by some of the nonprofits and churches in the town, and so that's just...
Yeah. The exempt are calculated at here. You will have a chance to see the LA 4, and in the LO 4, it shows how much exempt properties they grant. So, this is the LA 4. This is what was submitted to the DOR and approved. Total exempt, it's 176 parcel, and that's the total.
And the 176 parcels includes parcels owned by the town, too. That's not...
Correct. Churches, the towns.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tax title, things that we've taken. I don't think I've... I mean, I've not studied this many years, but I don't think I've seen the LA 4 before. I love that. I love that sheet. And so, under 64A, 61, 61A and B, there's two columns there. What is the difference between those two numbers?
Correct. So, yes, Scott, the difference between is some of the chapter land that I have, it is as a mixed use as well.
Okay.
That is why we need to divide how many of the mixed uses. We have on 61, we have two mixed uses on 61A, 31, and 61B. Nine.
Okay. Oops. Sorry. That was my fault. I was trying to make it a little bit better.
Yep.
The fun slide.
The fun slide.
How's the hot seat feeling right now?
Just warm.
Just warm? Give it a few minutes. Okay.
There we go.
So, here, it's with a different allocation of the tax burden. This is the FY '24. This is the tax rate, no allocation. This is the single-family. And this is the difference between from last year to this year, and based on whichever you decide to vote on the shift, this is how much the tax rate is different from last year. And this is the condos, the difference, the yellow one, the yellow highlighted column is the difference from last year to this year, and also the commercial.
And then again, what we're voting on today, I know you know this, this is as much for the people who are watching who don't, like, delve into these spreadsheets every year, is that the tax rate, if we did know, if we did know shift to the commercial, the tax rate would be $17.94 per...
$11,000.
Right. Right. It would be about $11,000 of the average single-family home.
Correct.
And that since 2011, the town has split the tax rate, sort of putting a slightly higher rate on commercial properties to keep the tax rate for the residentials sort of lower or flatter. And so, it's one of those, I don't... Someone has told me before, you know, live by the sword and die by the sword, sort of thing, is that, you know, when the commercial places were booming and growing big, we were able to offset a lot. If anyone's been watching, you know, retail places are watching the news the last, like, three-plus years, the value of those is going down. And so, our ability to shift as much to that and not run all those businesses out of town to cause this horrible downward spiral is more limited. And that's it. I looked at last year's adjustments, and maybe I just, I got the thing wrong, is that I thought we did a 49 split last year, and that's not even on it, and it looks like it would be irresponsible to go to that sort of level at this year. So, I'm just trying to figure, because your lower chart, this is, look, year '23, talks about a 30% last year, where I show our motion being 49. And so, I'm just trying to understand, is it just looking at the same number differently?
So, do you want to speak to that, or...
It's... You can, if you would like.
Sure. So, it was a 49... There was a 49% shift last year, but the reason that that made sense was we had significant commercial devaluation, but we did not have a corresponding rise on the residential side. So, I actually, and we've been talking about this throughout the past couple of weeks, Berlin is heading towards a place where a split tax rate is going to no longer make sense, and we are going to need to likely look at a single tax rate probably in the next fiscal year. What's happening is when you put everything through the wash in the split tax rate, and you can kind of see it if you look through these numbers, how they factor out between residential and commercial. If you were to do that type of a split, you actually end up giving a pretty significant discount on the commercial side, because of the way everything factors out with the math of the split. And the split is a little nasty, and it gets ugly, but when everything comes out in the wash, it makes the most sense, I think, in looking at these numbers for this year, to do the 35% shift and looking at where we're at and not creating a huge increase on the commercial side or a huge increase on the residential side. That sort of creates the most balance, I think, between the numbers that we see here.
And I'm still having a hard time just reconciling last year's numbers to this year's numbers. And so, last year, we voted on something that ended up with that the impact of it, because, as pointed out, we actually don't vote on the tax rate. We vote on the split between them. But the effective tax rate from our vote was $15.63 per, is it 1,000?
Mm-hmm.
For 1,000. But the chart up there says last year was $13.84 per 1,000. And so, I'm just trying to figure out why, if I pull up this exact slide deck from last year, the numbers just don't tie out.
Yeah. Because you would think if it was $15 and something last year, and it's dropping to $12.75, why is there such a significant increase?
Well, I almost can't... Is that because the valuation goes up, you can actually have a lower rate and still have higher taxes?
Right.
Which is this weird thing about math, you know? But if your property value goes up, the tax rate can still go down, and you can still end up with higher taxes.
So, obviously, the higher your value, the more tax you're going to pay.
Right. And so, when we're talking about, when you were talking about that the average home would go up by, you know...
$100,000.
Would go up by tax dollars of $600 to $700. That's based on the value of the house going up a chunk of money, too.
Right.
And so, some people, their property didn't go up that much, and some people's properties probably went up significantly more than that.
Right. It's just an average. So, when you look at where we were at, and I'll get back to your question in a minute, when we look at where we were at in FY '23, the average single-family home was valued at $558,000.
Oh, good.
And the average single-family home is $653,000 that we're close to in FY '24. So, that's the challenge that we're facing here. I think this data is just being presented in a different way, because the way that Molly did it with that .49 shift last year, I'm not sure exactly how that relates to the 30%. I think she was talking about the percentage of the shift that actually went between commercial and what it broke down to, because it can only be up to 1.5%. So, what do you... Do you know how we got to the 30% from... Because we were at point... We were at 49% I was... I thought we were at for FY...
Yeah. This is the part that I'm a little bit confused, because I know it was 1.49, so when you look at this column here, so I don't really know the 49%. I'm a little bit confused.
No.
Where was the... 1.49 was the zip last year that you guys voted, and the tax rate was 15-something?
Well, and so, I could have answered...
13, I believe, 58, not 15, 1358, and the commercial was 2349. So, the commercial is going up a little, $3,000. It depends...
Which one you're looking at.
Which one.
Right.
For example, Kristin, I think you recommended for the 35 shift for the 668, and the commercial would go up to $3,742.
Yes.
For the difference. Yes. And based on which...
So, up a little last year, up a little from last year to $24.39 now, but on the residential side, down to $12.85, which people would be like, psych, my tax rate's going down.
Right.
15 to 12 and change. Here we go with peg math.
Yep.
Pay attention.
Yep.
Alright. So, you know, you're... Welcome to peg math. I only deal in, like, round even numbers. So, 15, which is not even, but 15 to...
13.
12, 13 will round up. You're thinking, oh, great, my tax rate is going down, therefore, my taxes should be going down. But then you have the other hand saying, but wait, the value of your house is increasing by X.
Correct. 100,000, right?
Yes.
For a median.
For, on average.
Median.
Right.
Right. So, if you own a real large house, it's gonna be more.
More.
Right. If your value went up by more than $100,000, your tax will go up. But if your price did not go up as much, or didn't go up hardly at all, it'll be less. And this is the problem, is that we're a town of all kinds of extremes when it comes to value of properties out there. Some are worth multimillions, some are worth, you know, a couple hundred thousand, and so your taxes will be as whole.
So, the only really way to know if your valuation of your house is when the magical bill arrives in a couple of weeks.
That's right.
I know. And it doesn't include condos. That's why condo is broken out separately. This is just single-family homes that we can really run that estimate on. It gets a little bit trickier when you're starting to pull out other different types, and as you pointed out, peg other values of homes, because we have homes that go up into the one and a half...
Lock to monies.
Plus a million of dollars, so...
And you're recommending 35, not 37.
She's recommending 35.
Right. You're recommending 35, not 37.
I am recommending the 35%. What I think it does, and if you look at the difference in where the tax rate is at, you actually are seeing the tax rate change significantly on the commercial side. You're trying to balance between what you're doing on the commercial and the residential, right? So, you're seeing this average go up for the rate, which actually, if you look at the commercial side, that $24.75, if you were to do the 37% shift...
Right.
So, that's actually a decrease to the commercial side that's relatively significant. And I don't know that we want to go with that level of...
I don't quite buy that. So, when I look at the 37% shift, the average residential taxpayer, their bill is gonna go up by 8.89%, but the average commercial taxpayer is only gonna go up by 5.3%, which to me means that the...
Residents.
The residents are still paying...
More.
Still paying more. In other words, I'd be happier with a number that had their both go up about the same percentage.
Yeah. And it's hard to get to a place where you land on them having almost exactly the same.
Right.
So, one of the things, you know, that we had talked about when we met was, you know, if you want to be closer, that 37% shift does get you closer, but it, you know, in terms of the split, if you want it to be sort of an equal percentage going up, the problem is it gets a little bit more complicated on the commercial side because of the fact that we've had a little bit of devaluation there as well. So...
Especially the mall, yes.
The mall really took us a big hit this past year, because it was an ATB case that we've settled now.
We settled for the last three years, so yes. And I think it's going to go more down.
But there's more businesses going in the mall. 13 just went in a couple months ago, so obviously, you can't do anything about that now. I'm sure that's for next year this time, when you're sitting in the hot seat. What I think it does, and if you look at the difference in where the tax rate is at, you actually are seeing the tax rate change significantly on the commercial side. You're trying to balance between what you're doing on the commercial and the residential, right? So you're seeing this average go up for the rate, which actually, if you look at the commercial side, that twenty-four seventy-five, if you were to do the thirty-seven percent shift.
Right.
So that's actually a decrease to the commercial side that's relatively significant. And I don't know that we want to go with that level of.
I don't quite buy it. So when I look at the thirty-seven, thirty-seven percent shift, the average residential taxpayer, their bill is going to go up by eight point eight nine percent, but the average commercial taxpayer is only going to go up by five point three percent, which to me means that the, that the residents are still paying.
More.
Still paying more. In other words, I'd be happier with a number that had their both go up about the same percentage.
Yeah, and it's hard to get to a place where you land on them having almost exactly the same.
Right.
So one of the things, you know, that we had talked about when we met was, you know, if you want to be closer, that thirty-seven percent shift does get you closer, but it, you know, in terms of the split, if you want it to be sort of an equal percentage going up, the problem is it gets a little bit more complicated on the commercial side because of the fact that we've had a little bit of devaluation there as well, so.
Especially the mall, yes.
The mall really took us a big hit this past year, because it was an ATB case that we've settled now.
We settled for the last three years, so yes, and I think it's going to go more down.
But there's more businesses going in the mall. Thirteen just went in a couple months ago, so obviously you can't do anything about that now, I'm sure that's for next year this time, when you're sitting in the lottery scene. So it doesn't do anything for the town now that yay, there's more businesses going in, but perhaps next year.
All but one did go in on the mall bro side, but yeah, that's where we're struggling on the Berlin side, and we've been talking to the mall about that and how we can market better, excuse me, on the Berlin side.
Pickleball court and serious, just saying.
I like it.
Um.
Second. I mean, I just have, I understand that the taxes had to go up, you know, with the increase in the budget last year, I get that, but I'm just concerned, a six hundred dollar average, median, thank you, a six hundred dollar increase, I'm just concerned what it's going to do to a certain population in this town, and that we can't, six oh three to six sixty-eight, I mean, that's what, oh, sixty-five dollars? I mean, you're looking at an average of maybe fifty-five dollars a month if you do the six oh three and then whatever, that's huge to come up with an extra sixty dollars a month for taxes.
So what is missing from this year's chart that Molly did, and I think we'll still have a boat tonight missing this, is that we actually had the chart we just have, you know, thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-seven, we actually had from, you know, zero to fifty, or one to one point five, with sort of two percent gradations near the area where we're probably going to be debating, because I'd really love to see what forty looked like as well, because although the rate, unlike residential, where the rate potentially is going down, even though your property values are going up, you know, the commercial side, their values are going down, but their rates are going up, they're going to pay about the same what they were paying before.
Right.
And so I go back to that at thirty-seven percent shift, that the residential taxpayers are seeing about a nine percent increase, and the commercials are seeing a five and a half percent increase. And I like that number, I probably would like it better at forty, but that's not an option given to us right now, and I am not convinced I would go for forty even if it was on the chart, and I don't want to delay the tax bills from getting out any more than they might otherwise be.
I mean, unfortunately, you know, five to six hundred was the range that we were in when we were talking about it, because we had to tap into the excess levy this year. So that comes in pretty consistently with where we're at, given the increase in that home valuation of the hundred thousand dollars, that was why I was kind of recommending looking at that split a little bit differently, but I would still be comfortable with going with the thirty-seven percent unless you have some concerns about that.
No, absolutely.
Right. The assessment office tries very hard not to give us recommendations on this.
I know, and that's why.
And that's their job, their job is to provide all the numbers and apply it dispassionately and accurately, and I think you've done that quite well. I would be fine with a motion to do a thirty-seven percent split, shift, shift. And there's like a formal way these motions are supposed to be worded, because there's more than just that one motion, and I like.
This is the paper that needs to be voted and.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want to hand it to me, since I'm probably, since you're chairing the meeting, I should make the motion, right?
The last slide, please.
There's another piece.
Oh, there's another, okay.
I did put the small commercial exemption, how many parcels I granted, and I think it's the next slide, yeah.
Right.
So we have twenty-seven parcels that we granted the small commercial exemption, and the total value of the eligible parcels is the eight million five hundred six 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 five.
And then, we've typically always done the small business exemption, correct?
Correct.
We have at least last several years.
Yes.
Which is a great thing, because as we went through the slide, if you want to go back one more slide for people watching, you know, for small businesses in town where their value was less than a million dollars, and allows them for, to have some exemption on the taxes.
To have a little bit of a break, yes, the ten percent.
And then the residential exemption for owner-occupied versus non-occupied, we've typically not done, correct?
Correct.
Just before I make the motion, I'll make sure I'm going to make it in the right direction. And the open space discount, we typically, I can't remember if we do or don't.
Yes, we leave it, yes, we vote for it, to leave it as a residential.
So is that something we may need to consider at some point, given the amount of open space in this town that doesn't, I mean, open space, but taxes?
Yes, and that's a conversation we started to have this year as well. It is a pretty, has a pretty significant impact on the taxes that we collect by doing the open space portion of the exemptions, especially if it's a mixed.
Mixed, like.
Business and, and open space, so we may want to look at adjusting that going forward.
The open spaces chapter land, which is the farms.
Right. But we have a number of exemptions where it's, we had, it was businesses that were getting open space exemptions, because we don't differentiate between the two.
Yes, so we have this.
So there's that along with the small commercial exemption that gives a pretty significant discount on the tax side. So it's a, it's a challenge, right? Because you want to help small business.
Correct.
But you also don't want to push that permit, sorry, the, push that burden to the residential side.
Yeah, but the, the commercial exemption does more than just, just the tax. Because of that, it makes the properties less attractive for development, because of the penalties you have to pay to move it out of chapter land. And so you have to make sure that we're not doing it just to raise taxes and so on, and then suddenly discover that because of that, those farms are being turned into developed land and, you know, McMansions developing around town, which I'd rather not see.
No, 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 and this is, we were talking about not the ones that were open space or farms or agricultural, the ones that we had mixed. Can you, can you give an example?
Yeah, like we have some businesses that aren't commercial, taxes are commercial building and commercial land, but also the open space is, is taxed as residential while it could be as a commercial, like these are the examples that we may look into for fiscal FY twenty-five. We can have a meeting, and I can provide you with the numbers and the shifts and everything we decide to look into this, because in a lot of towns, open space is commercial, it depends what they voted. But when we looked at the numbers, it's kind of, it's a heavy burden for the residents, and I absolutely think this is great as well, but I know the side of the numbers, and I see it differently, so every small thing, change can help.
It does add up.
Yes.
So I, I think too, one of the things, and Linda obviously came in mid-September, and we've kind of stuck her in her office and locked her in there for the last two months, trying to get everything done for the recap sheet, but she does have some great ideas as we look forward to the future about some things we might want to have discussions around, you know, and especially in light of how things are changing with values on the commercial side and what we might want to look at. So I think those are conversations we definitely want to have going forward. It's not the time to have it right now for this year, but there are potential opportunities as we, as we continue to grow.
How's your summer?
Yeah, I was going to say.
It was good, I went to Europe for a couple of weeks, it was good.
Hang on to that memory, because we're going to keep you busy over the next week we start to talk about all this.
Just saying.
Right, right. The days before signing out the tax bill is not when you change tax policies.
No, 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 no. We'll let you get by budget season and, or in town meeting in May.
This one.
This one. This one. Then come on back, okay. All right. I got to tell you, this is like my one meeting that I absolutely hate.
Oh, um, I, I'm a numbers person.
I know, I know.
You know, it is though, also trying to make sure that although I can like, wurlie and doing some math in the head, that I say some of it out loud, so I make sure that I'm not going on a strange track somewhere, and, and also so that, you know, people at home watching, people here listening, you know, understand both the amount of work that you have to go into get to these, you know, spreadsheets, and, and as you just heard in the conversation, little ticks here and there, a little change, a little change in policy can have impacts in places, and, and trying to make sure. I don't know if these are worded in a way that is a motion, so I'll try to figure out if I can turn these into motions pretty easily, but I will start off with the residential factor, which I believe is, I'll make a motion that we will have a residential factor of thirty-seven percent, which is a shift, sorry, a shift of thirty-seven percent, and akin to what was the, on the spreadsheet that was presented to us. Sure, they're all written as motions, they're just explanations.
Scott, you just need to write it there, because I will upload this in the DOR, yeah.
Once we have a motion, a second it passes, I'll fill it in the.
So you want to go one by one?
Uh, yeah, I think we did the one by one, yeah. So it's thirty-seven percent, and it's a shift, right, is what we're, thirty-seven percent shift is the correct word?
So the tax rate will be twelve seventy-five.
Correct.
For residential and twenty-four seventy-five for commercial.
I'll second that motion.
I could probably feel that Hawkins is going to make the motion, Stone's going to second the motions since.
Dee's got that, Dee, you got that?
Yep.
He made it, I seconded.
Yep.
Okay.
You ready to call the hug?
Ready, like, and Stone, I, there you go, two nothing.
Um, let's see, I'm going to move the board not adopt a residential exemption.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, let's see, just because, starting in twenty-twelve, after the vote at town meeting, the assessment of classified chapter land as open spaces gives chapter land parcels a discount of being taxed at the residential rate as opposed to the commercial rate. No other properties have been classified as space, I move the board adopt an open space discount.
Seconded, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and then that will be in the minutes that we can pass. I have to, I need to fill this in, it's handwritten though, there's no signatures on this.
Just the.
What is, today is eleven-six. I, I think that's.
Is that it?
Tax area, yes.
One, two, three?
Yep. There's not another motion we need, there's not the.
Small business exemption.
Small business exemption is not actually on this piece of paper, but I, I motioned that we adopt a small business exemption as we have done in the past several years.
I'll second.
Two thousand and twelve.
Yep.
Second, and a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All unanimous.
All unanimous. Well, as always, Mr. Swan, Linda, we appreciate it, we know it's not easy for you guys to come and present this information, and it's just as hard for us to sit here and look at these numbers and wonder the impact on folks as they get their tax bills. So if you hear a collective scream in a week or so, do not be worried, it's just the mail being delivered.
It is true that once town meeting passes the budget, the, it limits the ability, I mean, because we can't change what the town is spending on something at these marshalls, because it's town meeting, it's the voters themselves that have a say in the budgets. You guys come up with all the fun math out there, then we, based on the presentation, you guys do actually come up with the policies.
And there's a lot of factors that go into where we can go to on that percentage, where we're at in local receipts, where we're at in valuation on the commercial and residential side, so, you know, at some point, it gets funky with the math, which is not a professional way to say it, but, you know, the math gets strange, and you actually start to see a discount on the commercial side, and, and basically a reduction in taxes, which we don't want to see that happen either, so.
Okay, well, we look forward to many more times working with you, as always. Thank you.
Phone now, Peg, so I can give it out.
One eight hundred five five five, one two, one two.
Thank you, I will just grab this.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks to you both. Linda's done a tremendous amount of work in the last couple of months, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so Kristen, before you pick up your report, under our, oh, we need to close the hearing, so the hearing is now closed at seven forty-three on eleven-six for our FY twenty-five classifications. So if we go back to the agenda, we have our general department updates, we have Fire Chief McQuillan in the back and Highway Guy Fred, so, Fire Chief Mike?
Okay, Peg.
Want me first, all right.
Mike, can you do Fred first, please?
I was just going to ask if we could do Fred.
Because we have some little boys that are very bored back here.
Oh, okay.
You are not an exciting group, one of them to listen to.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, come on, tax classification, he's going to go to school tomorrow, tell him you said in the tax classification.
They were all in the whole time.
They were all in.
It's going to affect how much is available for allowances.
And I have to tell you, we have a very motivated gentleman here this evening who wanted to come, even though I told him he didn't have to, because he wanted to meet you all, so.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we can jump right to that first.
All right.
So we had interviews a week ago, a week ago Friday, went through five people, actually made a follow-up call with Ken, and he's graciously accepted an offer to come work for us.
Yay.
Hi, how are you? Ken Patton, from Hudson.
I'm sorry.
From Hudson?
Yes, yes, sir, Hudson, from Hudson.
So he's going to be joining us probably, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We're just doing his onboarding, his paperwork.
Nice.
We're going to set him up with a DOT physical, just in case we have to put him in a plop truck, he'll be legal for it.
Right.
There will be no snow this year.
Yeah.
You forbid.
Come on.
Mm-hmm. So you're going to be our facilities guy, so you know, there's a leak in the ceiling and a bulb that needs changing, you're the guy to find?
That's it.
Speaking of phone numbers to give out.
Yeah, really.
Don't give yours out.
No, no. Go to proper channels.
As long as you don't mind me needing a nine-year-old coming along with me.
Absolutely.
We're actually going to try to put together like a work order type paper, so people can't just grab him, hey, I need to do this, hey, I need to do that.
Yes, which you're accustomed to, so, yes.
So I'm not afraid to say no, just so you're aware.
Please, we can get you a name tag. Hello, my name is.
Yeah, my name is, wait a minute, can I do it?
My name is, yeah.
Right.
Awesome.
Yeah, so Ken will be coming on, and these are his two little boys.
Great.
Hello, Ken's two little boys.
Alex and Anthony.
Hello, Alex and Anthony.
Hi, I got a wave.
Yes.
Do you want to do the appointment and then?
Yeah.
If we could do that.
Absolutely, let's keep going out of order, because why not?
We're going with the flow tonight.
We are going with the flow.
Chris is not here, we can do whatever we want, right?
The lunatics are running the asylum, yes, we are, okay.
I appreciate your flexibility.
I would make a motion to appoint Ken Patton to the Highway Department.
I gladly second it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can we have a vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't get a vote, but I say aye as well.
Yes, yes.
Now you're ours, welcome to, wait a minute, one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you pronounce our town's name?
Berlin.
What was that?
Berlin.
Berlin, very good.
Okay, now he's appointed, all right.
I'm a smart plant, so.
Hudson, can we say Hudson wrong?
You can't say Hudson wrong.
I know, you can't.
Hudson.
I know.
Hudson, New Hampshire, you from Hudson, New Hampshire?
Oh, we get, are you from Berlin, Germany, and it's like, really?
Yeah.
Oh, psyched.
Very excited, very excited.
Very excited to have you here, I'm sure Mr. Fred is even more excited to have you here.
It'll be a great job, there are lots to do in those buildings, we'll never lack of something to do, lots of variety, I'm sure.
Oh, midnight weeding, we won't make you midnight weed, but Fred has had to weed at midnight.
Yeah, you don't have to weed at night.
Because, because there is nobody, so.
Right.
I get a headlamp he can borrow, just saying.
Oh, Fred has one.
Yeah, I have.
I'll get two flashlight holders, so.
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh, no. Then it frees up two hands, too.
Forget the headlights.
Right, 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 right.
Awesome.
Get the helmet.
That's it.
There you go.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much, welcome to the town.
You are free to.
You are free to go.
You don't need to swearing in and.
That's right.
Yes, thank you so much.[1695.33] Yes, thank you so much.
Good night, boys, thanks for coming. Say yay, dad.
They get to meet the new police company.
That's right, and they got to meet Jax? So banner night.
So it wasn't totally a lost night.
No.
I mean, where are they, where are they at, but they got to meet the select one.
I don't disagree. Thank you, Ken.
Take care.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
All right, Mr. Fred?
My daughter was done?
No, you're up here now, you might as well go.
Yep.
Uh, all right, yeah, so our, uh, our chapter ninety project finally got completed totally, um, with the exception of just paint one stop line up there. We're done, we're off the hill. I have to submit one more reimbursement, which is for the top coat, so I'll be seeing the accounting department to get that done, check them. Um, we just did a, a leach pit up the street, finally just put some hot tub in that today.
What is it called?
Uh, a leach pit. Basically, it's just.
On women?
Yeah, just above the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I saw it, I didn't know what it was called.
Yeah, well, it's just a leach pit because it's, it's really no outlet.
Oh, for the rain to come down?
Yeah, it's just got a bunch of holes in it, so it just kind of like leaches back into the ground.
Okay.
Try to control the surface water. Um, obviously, our, our fall cleanups are in full swing, um, trying to get ahead of it. Uh, hopefully to get, get ahead of it this week, guys jumped on it this one, but we had a couple of other things to do. Um, the big thing that really happened was, uh, as you guys know, the, the tree that fell on the truck down at the, uh, transfer station, uh, that kind of come at the wrong time. We had three ton of mix just show up on the job, and, uh, we get the phone call, it's like, ah, are you kidding me? Um, so we, we split crews, we actually had someone from the transfer station shoot down, I think it ended up being with a police officer to get one of our guys off the mower to come up and help another guy. Um, well, so I did do the, uh, the, the tree, the critical, I forget the, the, it was called the critical something, whether, for my, uh, the tree warrants portion of it.
Yeah, incident.
We wouldn't have had any notion that the tree was actually diseased, uh, the canopy was behind other trees. Uh, being outside, um, the immediate right-of-way, it wasn't something they would have inspected every year anyway. It's just unfortunate that it came down that day at all. Um, so that, that was kind of like the major thing that really got us in the, uh, early on in the, in the month. Uh, we had two capital expenses, we had submitted, I was hoping to get a third one in, but I didn't get a response back from the company, uh, as you guys just met Ken today. The public buildings, um, it was a, it was a tough time because, you know, we're coming out of the, the heat going in the cold, um, so, you know, it's, it's tough because people want it warm first thing in the morning, but if it doesn't drop below a certain temp, the heat's not going to kick on, so it, it was just a constant thing. So there were a couple of days where we came in and actually forced it on to, to get them up. Uh, there was one call, I was out, uh, the foreman handled it. Uh, I think some of you may have experienced that the heat got up to like mid-eighties in the offices because, uh, it stuck on. So that got, that got cleared up over the weekend, that weekend. Uh, and everything seems to be running fine now. Uh, we just have to change the clock on the computer so the scheduled times reflect it. Uh, that's why this morning was a little chilly when you came in this morning. Um, so we're going to call that the eighteen-seventy had a water issue. Um, there really wasn't an issue. I hadn't heard back from Sandra, she was going to reach out to the tenant, uh, or the renter to find out, you know, what exactly stopped producing water, uh, because we had a guy out there within the hour, and he checked everything, everything worked fine. So, we don't know what the deal is with that. Um, we did some work with the, uh, the birds again out there, uh, they're still coming in, but they don't seem to be, um, going in through the walls anymore. So we're kind of like trying to contain them, then we just have to regroup them. Uh, not much on the inter-departments, uh, just the winterization of the cemeteries and the garden. Uh, the RTU unit on the roof, uh, that was slated to come in October eighteenth, they've got to kick back again, I believe. Two weeks ago Friday, I think it was, it was supposed to ship on. Um, I haven't had time to reach back out to them, so they weren't, is it really coming? Kind of figured they wouldn't have been like.
It's all in the mail, yeah.
That's really all that's been happening, um, this month.
Do you have any questions there, Mr. Hawkins?
Oh, and our bridge.
Right, I was going to say.
And the bridge.
And a bridge.
And a bridge.
And a bridge. So the bridge was, if we had kept with the original construction date, it would have been fall this year, we wouldn't have had an issue with it. Um, we did repairs underneath to the deck and to carry it as long as we could. Uh, it got to, like I, I think I told you originally, um, bridges are supposed to be inspected, uh, once every two years. Uh, that particular longer dropped to every year. Uh, and then obviously six months, well, now it's on the monthly plan. Um, they did their last on September fourth. I meant to, uh, print that and bring you copies. I'll actually submit it to Dee, you guys can take a look at the most recent. So it was done on September fourth, uh, I received it about a week and a half later. I read it the next, the next night, at the end of the day, I get a call from Mickey Spleen saying, you need to get bridge plates. Uh, so we looked into it, uh, and then the senior engineer, Moses, came out, I met with him down there, gave us the option of double plating it, you know, cross plating it. Um, we have no plates for it, and if I, it would have been twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, and they still would have had to come out monthly to inspect it. Uh, and I said, so in three months, something could go wrong, he's like, yeah, we'd have to close it. And then we're all twenty-four thousand dollars? I says, why can't we just close it now?
Yeah.
Um, it's a safety issue. Uh, and you'll see that when I, when I forward you the thing, you can crawl through some of the areas, the three right in the middle of the road. They tried going to push all traffic to one side or push it to the other, but when the three bad ones were in the middle, there was just no way to do it. Um, so we ultimately had to close it. Um, ideally, they wanted to close that day, I met with him at eleven-thirty in the morning, and I told him, I says, honestly, we can't, we don't have, like, our barriers aren't even pulled out. Uh, I says, will it go a day? And he says, yeah, we can go a day, day and a half if you need it. And I was like, no, tomorrow, we'll have it done. Which is why all the late messages came out and things like that, that, you know, nine-thirty in the morning. Uh, we at least got the buses through the first round. The only ones that were really opposed to it was, uh, the post office at the time, because their, their routes were impacted more than the bus routes. The bus, uh, and the lady I, I talked with was very open with, okay, it, it happens, we'll, we'll make it work. But yeah, so after talking with our engineer Olivia, uh, from VHB, they're projecting to put it out the bid between April and May. Uh, and then hopefully it'll take about a month, i- if it gets accepted, so, uh, it would take about a month for all the, the bidding war and everything else to go through, and then, you know, who knows when the company that gets it can come in.
Will be able to do it.
So it may be longer than twelve months, I don't know.
I mean, the only thing that we can do is, uh, when we get your report, is Kristen, if maybe you could couple something together as a summary, because, you know, again, and I know that Facebook is not the official town page, I understand that, but if you read it, it's very busy with questions, so if you could almost write something on our town page, that Dee could put it there, and then through the magic of sharing, uh, we can flip it out so that folks in town understand, because I've been hit with the, why does it take a year? It's like, well, there's a lot of work to be done, you know?
And throughout the whole thing, I got one phone call, and that was it.
And that's what I was going to ask, if anyone has.
Nope, it was just one gentleman from Copan Road, um, just.
Wondering what was up.
You know, what's up with it, how long, uh, because that's usually my route that I take, and.
Yep.
Sorry, it is.
It's safety first.
There have been inspections, because it got delayed from this fall to next spring because the bridge was inspecting well, they thought it was doing better. Did it just suddenly take a turn for the worse, or?
Uh, it seemed like it had, like, within the past six months, um, their ratings stayed the same.
Right.
Um, up until like the last couple of months.
Right.
That's why I, when I opened it and I looked at it, and I was like, oh my God, is this the same bridge we're talking about? Uh, and then I started looking at the pictures, and I was like, it is.
Yeah.
Uh, it literally, even our plates, um, are having issues.
Okay.
But it doesn't help because even when, uh, the senior bridge engineer was down there, uh, the, uh, ten-wheeled dump trucks were coming up the street, and it's not posted for them.
Right.
Uh, and he's like, and, you know, those aren't helping, it's like, yeah, but I can't be here and police them.
Right.
Right.
So yeah, it's just, you know, the truckers aren't paying attention because it's a truck.
Truckers get stuck in Westboro all the time, even though they have a height restriction on that bridge, so.
Same with Lancaster.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
And so it's just unfortunate that the bridge was given sort of better ratings that caused it to be delayed, that, so, because if anyone's, the, the, how fast both government were, this is a complicated project that you want done right. You want this bridge to last for fifty years, and so detailed specs, you want to make sure it gets bid to the right company that does a good job, uh, and is not sort of leasing the taxpayers, but also not doing a bad job, and sadly, some of that just takes time, and, uh, it's almost too bad we can't like, hey, state that, the, because it's the state that's doing this, right?
Well, we applied, so we're doing it through a small bridge grant.
Right.
But our, our engineers are now working because they're our consultants, they work directly with us. Uh, so once they do the bridge, uh, design, they'll submit it to them.
Right.
Hopefully it gets approved on the first round, if not, they'll kick it back, which I don't think will happen because.
Yeah, it's not a complicated bridge.
Yeah. Which is, it shocked me that they haven't even finished it yet.
Right.
Uh, honestly, when I reached out to her, I was like, oh my God, like, it's really not that hard.
Right.
So issues about funding, I mean, how is that going to be paid for? Is that all MassDOT, is it us?
Well, he was just saying, small bridge grant, and so, and Syria could go faster if we didn't, if we wanted to put it on the taxpayers, if we had a mechanism like a special town meeting and drain all free cash, you know, but, but that, there's a small bridge grant that the town is trying to get to, that will be paid for.
Yeah, so our phase one got approved, uh, a couple of years ago for a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, design engineering. Once the design is submitted and MassDOT approves it, we can submit for, uh, phase two, which is construction.
Okay.
Which will cover up to five hundred thousand if you get the full amount. Uh, at the time, that would have covered the entire project. Um, but now it's projected to be around seven hundred thousand. So the extra money would come out of our chapter ninety funds.
Is there anything that Representative Kilcoyne or Senator Kennedy can do with the money that the state has to help, if there is a gap in that money, that they could do to help push things along?
Um, I'm not sure, there, uh, the small bridge grant, you know, is really up to that maximum amount. Um, I mean, we, we can certainly reach out, but I, you know.
Wait, because we don't have anything yet, so it's kind of silly to ask for help when we don't know.
We need the design work, and also I have to say, even if we had the money to go out and do it tomorrow, it's still being designed, so that's, that's, we're, we were on that path anyways, and I can tell you, it's not uncommon for the state to do this, when you get the grant and they know you're going to replace the bridge, they like to shut down the dangerous ones because it removes the liability off the state and off the town. I've seen it happen before, twice in my former community, and the bridge was closed for almost a year, um, and then nine months for the other one. So it's basically, you know, taking that risk and removing it when it's in that condition. And if we were to do the plates, as you mentioned, they're expensive, and the liability is fully on the town, if anything happens, those plates shift and someone gets hurt, and it's just not worth the risk, um, to anybody to do that.
And actually, to put the plates down, we would have had to strip all the asphalt off it to put the, the plates down, and then completely pave over the plates.
So it would have been closed anyways.
Exactly, and that's the only way they would have let us keep it open.
Yeah.
Right.
It's an inconvenience, but again, you're erring on the side of public safety.
Exactly.
But you have to.
Absolutely.
And I, I did receive a letter from, it actually, like, stamped from the state that they sent off to, uh, the Boston Bridge as well, and I can forward. So you have, I guess, like a master plan or whatever.
Okay. I mean, it was definitely not taken lightly. I know if we had a lot of conversation about it, you had significant conversations with the state and the engineers that are working on designing the project, and it, it, it just really, we were backed into a corner a bit in a way, I think, in that, you know, unless we wanted to assume that liability and put people at risk, we had to close it.
No, understood, yeah, if you could just put a couple paragraphs together once we have all the information, so it just gets shot around as, uh, this is a state, it wasn't, it wasn't the town that said, let's close the street, you know, and here's the rest of the process for the, for wondering why it's taking so long, we need one, we need two, and we need three, so, at least to keep the folks of the town up to date as to what's going on. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, any questions, Mr. Hawkins?
Nope, you can ask ours.
Perfect. You asked me last month for no questions. Your wish is granted. You are free of questions from me for the month. Chief, of course, gets two because he didn't ask, but you don't get any.
So, well, thank, thanks for, thanks for coming.
All right.
Thank you, Fred.
I'll send you that, uh, report in the morning.
Yep.
Okay.
So that we can have it maybe later.
Appreciate you, Fred, thank you.
Oh, no problem.
And welcome, and again, welcome for your new body, so hopefully that will take some of the work off you.
I, I'm looking forward to it. He, uh, he seems very well-disciplined.
Good.
Yeah, I was actually grateful that he took it for what was offered.
Yeah.
Because it seemed long.
Yeah.
So I was kind of nervous.
We went as high as we really could go within where we're at budgetarily, budgetarily speaking.
Yeah.
And I, I was really impressed when, you know, we made the offer and said, so what's next? What's next in the process? I said, well, goes to the board for a vote, and, you know, you don't have to be there. Oh, I'll be there.
Yep.
I absolutely will be. I said, okay, you're more than welcome. So that shows some significant initiative, and that was impressive to me.
Yeah, before we set the hook, we actually sent all the electronic new hire packet. Why don't you start filling it out preemptively and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Awesome.
Yeah, he'll be a good fit, I believe.
Good, good, good.
So, but yeah, we are going to work on that slip that people have to fill out, so they can't just grab and take them all over.
Yes, please. And you as well.
Oh, I have one.
Our electronics system is on paper.
Okay.
Just have a quantity.
Yeah, I noticed. Mm-hmm. All right.
All right.
Chief, come on down to the hot seat.
Well, thank you.
An email of where everything can go. Nice to see you.
You as well. I see you still have your eye.
I still have my eye. It's freaking people out that I have my eye, but I still have my eye.
Yeah, that's a couple of comments about my office.
All right, what you got for us?
All right, well, um, basically, month of October, uh, we did sixty-four emergency responses. Um, I've listed out the inspections that were conducted by, um, Lieutenant Polino and the inspectional services. Um, and, uh, those are listed, the activity for the month. Uh, October was busy just anyway for us because it's the National Fire Prevention Month. Um, obviously, we had open house, which we talked about at the coffee talk where we saw two hundred people show up, which was great. Um, I give a shout-out to my crew and specifically, uh, Michelle DeVoe, um, who was key in actually coordinating the open house and all of our, uh, activities that we did at the, uh, school, um, and at the growing room, and having the kids here as well. Um, so it was a successful month from that standpoint, I think we got a lot of positive feedback on that. Kind of dovetailing into the fire watch detail, um, since my last report that I gave you, I received word from the school that we're looking at six months before the materials are going to be in for that. So that's stretching us until March. Um, I have reached out to, uh, some of my neighboring departments just to fill in the gaps as, uh, my staff is getting, I don't want to say burned out, they're, they're doing the details, they're covering those, um, but it's a lot to ask of them to do on top of everything else. Um, so I have had a couple of days where, um, neighboring communities have stepped up, and their firefighters have come over to fill out down there and be in, present for us and, and be there to fill that role. Um, still being reimbursed by the, uh, school's insurance carrier and stuff for our mutual aid companies as well, so that's, that's not coming out of the budget, so that's a good thing. Um, good news is that we have contact through CSX, um, that I'm working with to kind of set up a meeting, um, uh, with the police chief, myself, and the town administrator in order to kind of come up with a way in which to handle any of the, uh, issues that come up, uh, in town with the train and tracks. Um, he was very pleasant to talk to, and I'm hoping to hear from him, uh, by the end of this week to set up something for later on in the month. Um, so he was kind of looking forward to doing that, kind of moving forward on that in a positive direction. Um, I kind of listened to, you know, obviously, we do training every month. Uh, this, uh, month of October, we did that on CPR, uh, CPR and CPAP use in respiratory care. Um, and one of the things that I wanted to, to point out is that the AEDs have all been, uh, received that we're using, and we've deployed those. Um, probably ninety-five percent of them are in service at this point. I think we have one or two, as a matter of fact, I think the school, this, their second one was just installed last week, uh, I think on Thursday. I have two that are going to go out on the commons over by the soccer field and also over by the pickle court. Um, I think that our problem is we're trying to figure out, we've got the box for them to go in, we have to find a stand to put them on, and the funny thing is the stand that you can buy, which is just basically a pole, costs almost as much as the cabinet that it gets stored in, it's kind of ridiculous. Um, so I think working with Fred, um, and a couple of other people, we're going to come up with another way to mount that to a different, whether it's going to be a, a wooden post or it's going to be a metal pole, but we're going to come up with something that's a little bit more cost-effective for us. Um, unfortunately, uh, we still have a lot of vacancies for the shifts that we have open that are, uh, unfilled for the month of November. Um, we were up to over fifty shifts that hadn't been filled. We've had some people that have stepped up and taken some additional shifts, um, for the month of, uh, November, so that number's going down, but we did have three calls in the month of October that we had to rely on mutual aid for that we weren't able to. We, I have an officer, one of the lieutenants with the cabinets on call every night, um, and they were the only ones that responded, so they had to call for a mutual aid ambulance. Um, so I'm trying to figure out what's a good way to incentivize my staff and to get more people involved. Um, the, still working through hiring, uh, some additional qualified firefighters. One of them has kind of dropped out of the process and stuff, as I think he's moved on to another department full-time, um, so I'm hoping the other two can come on relatively quickly. Still working on the background checks with the police department, as obviously they've had a lot of activity, and that's kind of taken their priority there to do the background checks there. So kind of that moving target that I have right now of trying to figure out how we're going to deal with that and what to do moving forward, um, and having some conversations with the town administrator about that as well. Um, some of the initiatives that we have going on is the home safety check program has been really, uh, positive. We've gotten a lot of, uh, good feedback on that. We've met with a lot of the, um, residents, the elderly population and stuff that we've seen that we've really been able to upgrade some of their smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, um, which has been good because there have been some that have been really outdated, some that have been really outdated, some from the seventies that we've actually replaced that was kind of shocking to see was out there. But it is giving them that avenue to have somebody come in and give them an honest opinion of what needs to get done. And it's not somebody that's trying to swindle them. It's just here's what you need to do. Kind of either getting the detectors for them or they have a family member that can get them for us so we can go back and install them. So that's been really good. We had our pumps on the tanker and the two engines that we have kind of serviced and some maintenance done on, which was a little costly this last month, but it's a yearly maintenance program that hopefully prevents those pumps from going down. Because if we lose one of the pumps on the truck, it's about a $30,000 to $50,000 bill to replace it. Just want to throw out there for everybody that obviously we just set the clocks back and that's a reminder to change the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. So please, those are very important. They save lives and they need to be working. One of the contests that we have for open house is chief of the day where someone randomly gets pulled out of a hat, if you will, to come in and be chief for the day with me and kind of hang out. That's going to be done on November 16th. Harper Muldoon, who's a resident from Berlin, was our winner and she's going to be at the station with us on that day from nine to one. So I have so much of activities for her to do and it's going to be a good time. Only thing from fire prevention that I had was the final inspection was conducted at the Carter store and they're now open to the public and there were no issues to report.
Awesome.
That's basically my report.
What do you got?
With all the details going on at the school, is that causing some overtime hours? And does that overtime, the overtime pay get borne by us or the insurance?
Nope. The, everything that's being paid out by the school for the detail rate is being covered by the insurance. So my full-time staff is taking shifts on doing those detail rates. The only thing that's creating overtime right now is callback for emergencies. I have not instituted the, my full-time staff is willing to take some overtime shifts to cover some of these open shifts. I haven't pulled the trigger to allow them to do that yet. And that may be something that as I look at the budget and stuff and kind of move forward, I might do that, but nothing from the school is creating overtime.
Okay. That just was, I've seen it in places where, you know, the extra hours you're putting over here causes overtime over here. And I just want to make sure that that's being where it's fine. Fire ponds.
Yes.
There are several around town. I have the impression that as a whole, the fire department is, does not always care to use them because of the quality of the water.
Not the quality of the water. Sometimes it's the quality of the site. And what I'll specifically get at with that is we, twice a year, we'll drive around and as part of the, we exercise those fire pumps. Most of the water holes in town will draft from them, will backflow into them. And it accomplishes two things for us. It gets us training for our, for our department members on operating the pumps and flowing water. The other thing it does is we get to exercise those fire ponds and see if they're actually able to produce water for us, if there's something blocking them.
Right.
One of the problems that we have is if one of those fire ponds has a problem, we can't get into that pond to fix it. And what it comes down to is basically DPS kind of prevents us from being able to put a backhoe in the water because you need permits and everything else in order to do that. So we can't really maintain them if they're not working. There's a couple, like the one here on Linden Street is probably one of the best water holes we have in town to pull water from.
Big hole.
What's that?
Big hole.
Yes. And we'll tend to use that one for anything right in this immediate village district, if you will, just because that one's so reliable and all of our mutual aid partners know where that one is. When we were up on Peach Hill Road, we used the one at Peach Hill and Randall Road and for the, for the gas leak we had up there. And we pretty much depleted that one throughout the incident. So that was just about out of water. And the nice part was is by the next day, that had completely filled back up again. But it does depend on where the incident is and how easy it is to get into one of those water holes. But we train on them at least twice a year to get out and kind of hit all of those and kind of flush them and pull water from them.
Good. That's good. Those were my questions.
My two easy questions for you.
Yes.
CSX, when you talk to them.
Yep.
Trash, Linden Street. I went, you know what? I was curious as to like what was in the bucket.
Yep.
I couldn't pick up those buckets.
Really?
They're like filled with something.
I wonder if some of the metal or some of the nails.
Oh, there's a bucket of the ties, the sticks. There's a whole bucket of that, but the actual buckets, I figured they were just empty. Oh, no. They're filled. So I don't know what's in them. So, yeah, Linden Street seems to be the dirty one. Crosby doesn't seem to be bad. And then just on South Street, are they ever going to take away the collection of the wood and all the iron? Or is that going to stay forever and ever? And if so, can it get flattened? Because my concern is winter.
Yep.
That's where highway pushes it. You're never going to be able to do this.
Yep. I would find out from them. I was actually, and I'm not sure, I saw a truck that had a bunch of the railroad ties that were being loaded onto them. I don't know if they were taking them away or dropping off new ones. I have to circle back to find out.
I noticed that our collection is starting to grow over there of those ties.
Yeah. I will find out an answer on that as well.
Okay. And the easiest question, friend of mine lives in Clinton. I've already been hit up. On his way to work, he passes Rudolph. Rudolph was late in being lit last year. Will Rudolph be lit this year?
That's a really good question.
And if not, can we find another home for Rudolph?
We've actually talked about finding another home for Rudolph. And one of the suggestions that I got was to donate it to the general store, just because everybody drives by that and it's kind of along the same route, which I'll probably talk to Ed about that's something he's willing to take on. We talked about kind of moving it to the fire station here and having it at town hall, but it's kind of hidden by the fire station. It's not a good place for it just because you're not going to see it.
Correct. Okay.
So kind of working on that, but I'm not sure where the ball's going to land. And I, I don't know if it's got power to it at the old building and stuff at the moment. So.
I don't know. When I was talking to Lieutenant Polino, he said that he was, he gets very concerned about plugging Rudolph. Like the lights, the lights are there, but they're not in. So he gets very concerned about.
Yep.
So I will at least let my friend know that Rudolph is being considered.
Yes.
Okay. All right. See? Easy questions.
I like it.
All right. Kristen, anything?
No, I'm good.
All right. How's Lily?
She's doing very well.
All right. Has Lily met Jax?
Yes, actually they met this morning. It was adorable. Jax was not very impressed. Lily kind of sniffed and met and she came, and Jax came into my office, was happy to see me. And then Lily wasn't happy. So she came over, she was a little jealous. So Jax tried to go underneath the sofa. And it was cute because after I had Lily sit down and stuff, Jax finally got excited and started wagging his tail and went over to see her. And just as that was happening, there was a call that came in that Sergeant Gilchrist had to leave. So that was about as close as they got where Jax was actually happy to meet Lily. So.
Okay.
We're going to continue to work on it and yeah, that's good.
Awesome. And thank you for all the posts on Facebook. That it stirred quite a bit of folks, you know, thank you and sending kudos out for Jax. So yeah, if we can put something out with Jax and Lily.
That's the plan. We actually, Sergeant Gilchrist and I tried to do it again this afternoon and we got, so we could get a good picture. But unfortunately, it was such a busy day for Jax. He was, he was down for the count.
He was out. Well, he looked out when he had it in his arms.
So hopefully, hopefully tomorrow morning, we'll get that picture and be able to get that out online and stuff.
Okay. Well, thank you, chief.
My pleasure.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right. Back to you, town administrator. We got about halfway through your report, I think?
We did. Okay. So the next section was personnel, which we already talked about, the new building maintenance operator laborer position that we just hired for, Mr. Patton. And we also will be having interviews for the administrative assessor position. Those are actually scheduled for next week. I said this week, but it's next week that the Board of Assessors will be conducting. I met with Neshova Neighbors at their request to learn about their efforts to assist seniors with aging in place. And I will be following up and I spoke a little bit with Victoria today to learn what we actually already are doing to partner with them. And I will be following up with their organization to discuss this as well. Highland Ridge is problematic, as many of you know, if you've been paying attention to any of the Conservation Commission meetings. Project is currently under a cease and desist order until the erosion control measures and some of the code issues can be addressed. And unfortunately, there was a cease and desist earlier this year that was lifted and deadlines were not met and a cease and desist had to be reinstated. So at this time, no additional occupancy or other permits will be issued over at that property. And town council is now assisting us and ensuring that the town and the residents are protected. I have notified the FINCOM that based on the very limited budget that CONCOM has annually on top of the 72 Carter project that we've been working on, we will need to do a reserve fund transfer to carry in legal costs associated with the project. However, this has been a longstanding, ongoing issue. And I think the Conservation Commission has done a fantastic job at addressing it and trying to get the developer to comply. I have concerns that we are stepping into a larger problem, that we need some legal guidance on. And I want to make sure that we're covered on that basis. So I am getting legal counsel up to speed and working with Carolyn McDonald, the chair, on that. I also met with the new Solomon Pond Mall Management Group, Spinoza. They are looking at doing a modification to their mall overlay district to enable future development. And they will be meeting with the planning board shortly to request some changes and hopefully have that come forward in May. They're still discussing internally exactly what they want to do. So whether, it's probably looking towards some residential because that is really where the market is right now, as we just saw. So that will be forthcoming. And we're working on the records digitization project with Amy, who is currently meeting with various software companies to obtain quotes and view demos. And that is all I have for you this evening. Questions?
Oh, it's you and me. We know who's going first at all these, don't you?
Well, I have a page and a half. So goodness.
Highland Ridge.
Yes.
If there is a violation of the cease and desist, who is authorized to go out and enforce it?
So the cease and desist order is issued by the Conservation Commission. They filed their enforcement order with DEP.
Right.
And we do have legal counsel reviewing everything to offer guidance on next steps with regard to violation.
Let's assume they decide to say, I have no knowledge they do or not, but assume they decide to say, well, we're going to just continue doing construction and other stuff anyway. Who is allowed to go up there and say, no, you're not. And I don't know, how do you stop someone from doing construction if they're doing construction?
Legal action unless you.
Well, funny that you mention that. It was on my second page during the last CONCOM meeting last Wednesday. Homeowners produced pictures of two of the residences that were purchased by the management of that. And they were caught on camera bringing in cabinets, window treatments. So the last two places that need to be sold were in fact sold and bought and are getting ready to be rented. The owner and his lawyer were sitting there. So I don't know if you want to consider that on notice, but when the resident said, I have you on photo doing this, the reaction was.
And that's part of the issue as to why we need to get legal counsel involved because we are being ignored.
Yeah. I mean, they're still having issues. They've got plans, but residents aren't aware of plans. They're siding off some of the houses that have been taken down that are not put back. So obviously with the cold weather here, people are concerned about that. Waddles were moved by the landscapers and even though the maintenance people were there, they were asked point blank, did you see that the waddles were moved? Yes, we did. Why didn't you put them back? So CONCOM is trying. I tip my hat to them every week, but.
Absolutely.
Again, I think because of the way that that agreement was written with a wink and a prayer and a nod and no enforcement, their hands are tied.
There is one other option that the developer has actually brought forward, which is doing a bond. That was strongly discouraged by town council because then that puts the responsibility for completing the project in the town's hands, both financially and legally and liability wise, should the developer fail to complete that project. And we, it's not advisable to have the town working on private property.
Right.
So we're exploring what our options are from a legal standpoint at this.
Yeah. For the amount of the bond that they mentioned, it, to me, it seemed horribly low.
Yeah. I mean, you would be looking at minimum of half of a million dollars if you were going to do it.
Oh, no.
No, I know they were mentioning lower, but that's, that was the advice we received was minimum half a million. And with prices escalating, the town would be responsible basically for any cost that came in above that.
Sorry to interrupt, but I figured since you were talking about Highland Ridge, I would check that in.
The call or recommendation, does that require a motion of the select board?
It does. It's later on the agenda.
Okay. I looked at it even a couple of times and knew that. That'll be enough for me for now.
You've jumped around.
All right. Just a couple of quick questions. I mean, we were privy to see all the paperwork going around regarding the facility study, but for the folks in town, could you kind of give an update on where we are for facilities and energy assessments? Because I think that there's some assumptions by people in town that it's done.
Oh, gosh, no. No, it's not going to be done until I would say probably somewhere around February. What we're doing is building assessments at this time. So we've been completing questionnaires on each building, which are lengthy questionnaires. It's taken us some time to do because we have to look at every system, every aspect of every building, fire code wise, maintenance wise, hours of use of buildings. It's fairly extensive. So Fred and I have worked on those as well as fire chief as time permits. And in the interim, the company has come out and they have done surveys of several of the buildings. Actually, I would say they're about three quarters of the way done at this point and facilities because there's obviously South Commons and other places involved. So once they get that data, they have the data from us, they're going to put together a report, crunch the numbers. They're also looking at doing an energy audit, which is another component of this. And once they have that basic preliminary data, there is a capital plan that is going to be put together, a building reuse plan, which is going to look at, should we basically repair, replace, tear down, sell each of these buildings? So they use a mathematical formula to determine that factor, at which point we should basically chuck or fix essentially. So there's a number of components to this. And the other thing we asked them to do was a space needs analysis because there are a number of buildings that we are holding on to that are perhaps underutilized, being utilized for storage, sitting there, rotting away, needing repairs. And do we want to put our money into that or is it better to sell or in some cases even demo some of those buildings? So it's quite a lengthy, complicated process. I might even say March. You know, it's not done yet. And then that's actually going to drive what I would say would be the FY26 capital process. So FY25 capital requests are already in. So that's not going to affect next year.
It's been a while since we talked about upper funds. And I know that the money is already allocated, but is there anything on there that we need to be watchful of, that we need to like gently prod people along to be like giddy up, let's go?
Funny you should mention that. I have been working and Fred and I and even Rec have been trying to get a quote on tearing down the brown barn and paving the parking lot over there. I have finally received two quotes on tearing down the brown barn. These literally came through one Friday, one today. There was a conditional allocation of $50,000 for the brown barn slash parking, which we knew wasn't going to be sufficient. So actually put in for another $50,000 through the capital process this year. And the low quote that came in to remove the brown barn was just under $24,000. That includes tearing it down, dealing with any environmental issues that are within the building and hauling away the debris and reseating, loming the ground to restore it back to where it's at, which I think is relatively short money. And it was something that probably if you felt the need to have a vote, we could bring it forward at next week's meeting because I didn't have it on the agenda. So that was one of the things I wanted to do. Rec is still looking into the playground. So I will bug them on that a little bit. But everything else, we've been moving forward with website, digitization. The server project is actually, the servers have been purchased and installed and they're in the process of converting over all of the data. And you probably know far more about that than I do. But I think everything else is moving along pretty well.
What about the $200,000? I know there was kind of sort of earmarked for the bunk upstairs. Obviously, that's, that truly is like a drop in the bucket. It's not even going to do anything. So do we, what do we do with that money that's allocated? Do we shift it? Because obviously what we thought it was going to cost versus what it's going to cost, it's hugely different.
That's a great question. We have spent $11,000 on the architect and the designs and the preliminary cost estimates. So we're a little bit less than two. But yeah, it's something we should probably talk about because that, that funding does need to be expended by the end of '26. The only reason I might suggest we hold off. The only reason I might suggest we hold off perhaps six months is that the state is doing a municipal buildings program right now. And we've put ourselves in a really good position to be shovel ready, if you will. Um, I would hate to allocate those funds to something else and then them to say, oh, the town has a match, and we go. Oh, we had the money, now we don't. So um I would like to wait, I I participated in a weekly call with Ann Govey, who is the Rural Affairs Director for the state, and she's been updating because all of the communities are very interested in this, especially for public safety um facilities. So I think we wait a little bit on that. We have till the end of twenty four to reallocate or encumber, if you will, those projects.
And then the last question, um, last week when I was in ConCon, I know that Brittany and Roger were working on the new setup.
Yeah.
Perhaps it's me. Scott, maybe can help me out here? But I thought the way that the hybrid was originally explained to us is that, I'll use we. We being who was ever in the meeting at the room, uh at the room at the time, had the ability to turn on and off the recording. The way that I understand it now is that all the mics that are on the table are live. So even though I say, and the meeting has begun, and you flip it on in the other room or start to tape it, you have live mics here. So a citizen comes up and has a conversation that nobody else should hear. It's getting picked up. Now it's it's controlled by in the room. My concern is executive session, that we say, we close for executive session, blah, blah, blah. We can all look up and see that little red light is on or off, so we know to talk, not talk. That's in the room. Is somebody gonna be coming up to say, yes, everything's off? Go ahead. I mean, it, just the way that it was originally described to us as we had the control is not the way that it's working now.
Okay, so all the green light means is that power is on. It does not mean that it's recording. So that's a really important thing to know because I know people see the green light. They assume it means it's recording. That does not necessarily mean that it is. Brittany is our cable person. She's actually doing the recording in the studio. She splices all of the meetings. So if anything were to have happened to have been picked up until you say, opening the meeting, that gets cut out. So there's nothing that gets recorded. She actually looks at each of the meetings. That's one of the things that we pay for to make sure that things like executive session don't end up on a meeting. If you are oh extra concerned about it, I'd recommend you go into a room that doesn't have a camera, like come in here or go across the hall. But um I have been assured repeatedly by Brittany, and she she's very professional. She's done a great job with all of this. She watches the beginnings, the ends of each of those meetings and makes sure everything is spliced. So only things that happen when you're open session get, you know, recorded. Now, if an executive session is in the middle of the meeting for some reason, she does actually like it if she's given a heads up. And that's one of the things she's told us for years, so that she can make sure she doesn't miss that. Um, and that communication is important to bring anything that's an anomaly to her attention. Um, but you know, I I don't know kind of how it was explained when it first started because I kind of came in towards the tail end of the project, but.
Yeah, I, so it's just the interpretation of how easy it is. Cause I thought originally to make sure the mics aren't picking anything up during executive session, you might have to physically unplug the mics to make sure they're not connected or anything.
Yeah, so I think there's a bit bit of a disconnect of how it was explained to what it is.
Okay.
Now, um, you know, in in regards to space, like especially conservation, they usually have people pulling out giant maps, you know, so unless you're talking directly into the microphone, people aren't going to hear you.
Right, it doesn't get picked up if you don't talk into the mic.
And just like if there's uh cor- uh, somebody in the crowd steps up and says, we, they either come up to the mic, correct? You either come up to the mic or we have a mic, and we hand it to them. Because if Dee's yelling a question from the back and she's not on mic.
Yeah, it won't get picked up.
It won't get picked up.
Right, so it that's exactly right. Um, one of the things Brittany's doing is she's writing up instructions right now for boards and committees so that everything is very clearly outlined how the process works. And we're doing a training on November fourteenth. Um, that is at ten thirty and six thirty. So mark your calendars. If you are a person in town, whether you're an employee, board or committee member who um helps to run meetings, I think especially any of the clerks, um, this would be great for you because we'll have the laptops in the room. And basically, the laptops are how you start the Zoom meeting. So that's the only piece you really will need to be trained on is how to actually start the Zoom piece of it.
So they'll be in by then, the Chromebooks?
Yes, so they're actually not Chromebooks. Unfortunately, because of the speeds, we did check with CM Geeks. They did recommend a regular Dell laptop, but not as expensive of one. I think the laptops came in and they were about six fifty. So definitely more than a Chromebook, but we did have it within the funding allocated for the project. There are a couple of technical glitches. We did do a trial run um that we're trying to get worked out, the bugs between uh key code and ourselves. But so far it is moving forward.
Good.
Well.
Okay. Any other here, Mr. Hawkins?
No, I'm good.
All right, cool. All right, uh, moving down, uh, we're up to discussing and voting on the revised comfort dog policy.
Okay, so everyone saw Jax here this evening, which is very exciting. Um, and last week, or last meeting, rather, you conditionally passed the policy, or you did actually pass the policy as it was written. But there were a couple of concerns that were addressed, and I've actually uploaded the policy with highlights as to the sections that were changed. Um, and they relate to, I will actually.
Page four.
Thank you very much.
Will be the designated person to make serious medical decisions to include review of all medical costs associated.
Correct, and I actually did get clarification too. What if the dog has some, like an ACL tear or something crazy? Knee patella luxation or whatever these things are. Um, the vet that is actually providing the services pro bono does surgery as well and has agreed to provide those services pro bono. So that helps us out as well, but the, you know, discussion was centered around the handler really should be involved in making that decision. Because they are day to day with the dog.
Okay, and then the next one talked about the equipment, so in the event the cruiser's out and the dog needs to go, how does the dog get there?
Correct, and they have a crate that they would trans- transport. But that cruiser is actually going to be with the officer at all times, so it shouldn't be used for any other purpose unless it's down for repair.
Yeah, no, I I was fine with both the changes, and and again, I think it was just making sure we had a clear policy because when something big needs to be made, people will second guess who's the right and wrong person. If we said, look, this has been the policy all along, then it's, it's fine.
So they've asked if you would revote it and if you would actually sign off on the revised policy.
Um, I will make the motion to uh for the revised uh comfort dog policy.
And I will second it, put it to a vote.
Aye.
And aye. Okay.
Perfect.
All right, so zipping down into new business, we've already approved Mr. Patton. Again, thank you very much for being our building guy. Uh, next up is to appoint Russell Baker as a per diem COA van driver.
We're very excited. Uh, Russell has made it through all of the um checks that he has to go through uh and has actually started because we were in a need to um provide van services. So he did actually start on November first, so I apologize, I'm kind of asking for permission and and retroactively. But um he did come recommended by the Council on Aging and Victoria, the COA Social Services Director. And we were really down to rides one day a week, so we wanted to make sure we got somebody back out that could help folks.
Can I get a motion?
Uh, I will uh move to uh appoint Russell Baker as COA driver, and I'm fine with it retroactive back to the first of November.
I will second, put it to a vote.
Aye.
Aye and aye. All right. We have already welcomed Officer Davis aboard to the Town of Berlin. Thank you very much for your service. And we are about to talk about an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for seventy two Carter.
I have some deja vu about this.
This is deja vu, so um yes, this is.
Complicated real estate transaction.
Thank you. That is probably the easiest thing to say. There, it had to go through probate court. And now I understand there is a financial matter that needs to be resolved, which is holding this up a bit. So the seller has asked if we would extend the P and S through the end of November. They anticipate a mid-November closing, but wanted till the end to hope us from hopefully having to do it again.
I would make a motion to uh amend the purchase and sale agreement for seventy two Carter for a closed date uh at the end of November.
Seconded and a vote.
Aye.
And aye. All right.
Dee, do you have those documents for them to sign?
Is that what?
Oh, are they right there? Oh, we got lots of folders. We got things to sign.
Well, I saw it here, and then I'm like, I know if I'm supposed to be looking at this now.
I know, you were peeking. I saw you peeking through it.
Well, that would get signed too.
Right.
True.
I put a pen on top. I should have put a note.
No, 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 that's okay. So yeah, there's also a certificate in there.
And we have our secret pens too.
Boston Post cans.
True.
Yes.
Um, you can start working the next one as I start signing things.
All right, so next up is a discussion and a vote on fiscal year twenty five COLA and market adjustments.
Yes, so um we took a slightly different approach this year in talking with the Personnel Committee on how to address the COLA as well as uh step increases. So I'll talk about the COLA first, which I already briefly addressed. Last year, we did a two and a half percent COLA. I've been looking at cities and towns as they're rolling in on the state spreadsheet that we get through the Mass Municipal Human Resources Association. I would say about a third of the cities and towns have taken their vote so far. It's very limited. Uh, it might even be a quarter. People are ranging from one percent up to Harvard that's doing a five and five point six seven percent, I think is what it is. They follow the Consumer Price uh Index. They did eight something percent last year. While I would love to be able to follow the CPI, unfortunately, that's just not something that's realistic for us, given our budgetary limitations. And given what we encountered last year with uh unfunded mandates and the lack of state funding that um particularly around school matters, I recommended that we start with the typical two percent and and build the budget conservatively around that number. And if we do have the ability to go up to two per- two and a half percent, once we've built a preliminary budget, then I would bring that back to the Personnel Committee to revisit that. But the initial vote is for two percent at this time.
So a question that I have, when you have um someone who really doesn't have any direct reports but works with other departments, what is the process to gather input from them as well, or is it just you? So let's say I'm I'm PEG.
Yes.
And I am in, I am in a department unto my own, and I have no direct reports, but I support Scott because Scott is a department unto his own. So do you just write my review, or do you say, Scott, I know you work closely with PEG? What's input that you could share with me?
So we haven't implemented three hundred and sixty degree reviews for department heads or employees at this time. There's a performance evaluation that's been in place for a number of years here that we've used. I think it probably could be reviewed, and we could look at that process a little bit more. But right now, basically, the department head reviews the employees and I review the department head. Um, and that's how that process has worked. Although I will say, on the step increase side, we decided to do market adjustments this year. We're not looking at merit increases. Um, the basis for that is it's very challenging to justify merit increases. Uh, we talked if somebody had done an extraordinary, you know, long, page-long justification reason, you know, that this person was an outstanding absolute superstar, and this is why we have to do it. But what made the most sense was going back and looking at our steps and where our class and comp plan is compared to the market today in light of COVID. Because our class and comp plan was done in FY twenty. We're headed into FY twenty five. Those plans are typically updated every three to five years. So one of the things I want to do is actually seek a little bit of free cash to update that plan in FY twenty five. But in the interim, I went back, I looked at the H R S study that was done in twenty. I went online. The M M H R has a salary benchmark survey data where they solicit feedback from cities and towns. I will say it is incomplete. Um, there are a number of cities and towns that do not report their data. And so I was looking at data that wasn't always comparable. But what I did was I pulled the best that I could from the H R S study and from the benchmark study, and I looked at the positions that were really underfunded and where we have traditionally been losing people to other cities and towns. I will say the department head positions for the most part are pretty up to par. I look at MMA, I look at the salaries that are posted for surrounding towns and positions. It's really predominantly at the assistant level that our positions are significantly underfunded. And in some of them, it's by a number of dollars per hour that they're underfunded. I wouldn't recommend really adjusting by more than one step. And so I went and I just looked at all the positions that were, they said they were underfunded in the H R S study. They still appear to be underfunded based on the most current data I could find from FY twenty two and FY twenty three. And that's how I came up with the numbers. And ironically enough, I didn't set out with a dollar figure total in mind. But last year, we did about eight thousand dollars in market and uh adjustments. And this comes to just under eight thousand dollars this year. So we're right in that ballpark of where we were last year with adjustments. And I'm hoping this will help with employee retention.
Yeah, I'm, go ahead, Scott.
Here, the eight thousand dollar number you're coming at, well, seventy eight, nine, but the eight thousand dollar number is uh after COLA. And so, but if, cause if you go from fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five, that's more like a fifteen thousand dollar.
Correct, so I wasn't counting the two percent COLA. I was saying this would go above for those particular positions.
Right.
I mean, yeah, I I think, you know, and again, it's my own personal opinion, but I think you and and Personnel, maybe after things calm down a little bit and a town meeting, that we could really look at the way that the reviews are done.
Sure.
Um, because I know, you know, people like to give fives. But to me, a five is that you are doing something something extraordinary every day of your employment.
Yep.
And honestly, that is not realistic, you know, but I know, you know, people are are grateful in this town, and they're like, oh, a five. And you get a five, and you get a five, and it's like, no. So I, you know, maybe we start to look at three sixties where, you know, I fill out mine, you fill it out. Scott, who has, you know, working knowledge of working with me, fills it out that you really get more specific information, um, you know, between what, and maybe you don't do threes and three to five. You just do three, four and five, because if you're a one or a two, you shouldn't be here. And I don't think that we have those people. But you have the threes, the fours and the fives of, I'm doing my job, I'm doing my job a little bit better every day. I'm like super doing my job better every day, and I think that's what people have to understand is that a five is extraordinary all the time. Policies, procedures, things that you're doing are absolutely different, not because I just showed up and I did my job.
Right, and it lays that out in the review. It actually has two pages upfront that tell you what qualifies under each category and what those points are that you should be looking at. I think the comments are actually more beneficial than the numbers.
Correct.
Um, and so I tried, especially with the department head reviews, to really focus on comments of what can be worked on, what they're doing really well. Um, I agree with you. I don't think anyone should be getting fives across the board. Do I think we have people who have fives in certain areas? Absolutely. Um, and the, I think the hard thing, and this is why we talked about it with Personnel, when you're looking at merit increases, you're you're sort of pitting people against one another and pitting assistants against their department heads because of course they're gonna wanna give their employ- their assistants a five because they feel like they're underpaid. And if that's the only way that they can get a step increase, then that's what they're gonna do. So that's why we focused on the market adjustment piece of it and not the quote unquote merit piece of it. But I agree with you. I think the process could be reevaluated so that we have a better way to assess it going forward.
And you know, maybe it's one of those things we throw on our agenda for months from now. We try and come up with out of the box thinking, you know? Scott, you're, you know, you're a rock star on your thing, and I can't give you eighty thousand dollar increase, but hey, I can give you this. So, you know, I think we need to start box, not even look inside it, but just start stepping around it, figuring out what we can do.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. In theory, the grade inflation is not a Town of Berlin particular problem. It is across society where people freak out because they got an A minus and not an A plus as opposed to, you know, everyone wants tens everywhere. And gosh forbid, I rate one of my vendor support countries supports an eight on a ten point scale. They're like, well, what did you do wrong? Like, no, you did great. Eight is really great, you know? You know, ten is, I didn't have to call you on a problem, you know, because it didn't exist. But uh, but yeah, we we can talk about it more. I uh, you know, I'm I'm always worried about budget stuff. Um, I think we have town department heads have been paid well because we've had some turnover lately. We've had to sort of go to the market. I think that that you're right, that next level and other people in town need to be looked at. I I think even if you go from the uh, three forty two for the list of people you have here to three fifty seven uh for that same list and that. Uh, for that same list and that's what fifteen thousand and not eight, I, but my worry is the problem total, not the, the actual process. And so I, I am uh fine. I think two percent, I, I think is probably too stingy with where uh inflation has gone. But I think as a starting point, when we don't know where the rest of the budget looks at, I think that is fine to do now. Um, and I'd be looking to see what we could do a little bit more uh later on. And so at some point in the budget process. If, I'd love to know if COLA went from two to two and a half or three, what is the budget impact of that across? Because I see what the COLA is for this list of eight people, but I assume we have more than eight people that are covered by the COLA.
Yes.
Um, uh, but for, for adjustments on these eight, I, I'm totally fine and willing to make a motion. Uh, uh, for that step and, and, and the COLA for the all staff.
I'll second it. Um, and put it to a vote.
Aye.
And aye. Alright, well, we are nearing the end of our public meeting, but wait, there's more. Um, board questions?
Uh, uh, huh, uh, Housing Trust, oh my goodness, it's getting late, my brain is frying. Um.
We have executive sessions, Scott, you need a coffee.
I know, and I have caffeine in the, the T I every day. The uh, uh, we, so Housing Trust met. Um, we are going to put together a capital request item to CPA money for about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, it is to go to uh two starter projects uh that we're debating. Um, uh, more will be flushed out as we get closer to town meeting and how much goes into one project versus the other. Uh, one really is a, using some town tax title land to develop a house that could be sold at an affordable rate. Uh, and, and a second project would be some down payment assistance for first time home buyers buying homes that are. At a more affordable price in town. There might not be a lot of qualifying properties and numbers, but, but that, that might. There, there are developers that look at land and if they knew that would be easier for, for people to buy them, they might be able to, to work on that.
Absolutely.
Uh, we believe that the property that will probably have to develop uh for affordable will probably need some uh. Uh, zoning board of appeals and approvals and some variances allocated, but uh we're hoping that's not too difficult to get. Uh, and think, think of these as sort of the starters because we, as, as the Housing Trust and Planning Board really start talking about how do we encourage. More affordable fifteen hundred square foot houses and not three and four thousand square foot houses that, that, that uh are million dollar properties. How do we, how do we, where do we put and how do we encourage that, that type of affordability stuff? Um, Historical has uh so many meetings and projects going on. I don't know how they're getting done, all the stuff that's going on. And, and I am even have a hard enough time even keeping up with all the minutes on all the stuff they're doing, but they are still working on some Bullard uh house stuff. Uh, they are still working, they have now some hearings, including uh, I believe a vote on Friday. On uh, uh, the demo permit for thirty nine Sorry Hill Road. Um, uh, and to just interject a tiny bit of politics into a political appointee. Uh, I have actually spoken personally with the new owner of, of thirty nine Sorry Hill Road. Uh, and believe that she will be uh an incredible addition uh to the town. Uh, I hope I'm not saying too much stuff out of, out of turn, but she is uh buying it because she was like developing a horse farm of the place. Wants the land for uh, uh, hay for her horses. Uh, the strange mowing pattern she has done or had done is not for some sort of alien landing strips. Uh, but are, are for uh taking out, trying to take out the milkweed. Uh, so that the hay quality is better for her horses when she gets there. Um, she currently uh works in a neighboring town uh as a social worker. That helps at a farm that help use an, farm animals as therapy. Um, I don't believe that's what she's planning on using the place at all, but, but that she has sort of a history of things that I think the town will find very beneficial, so.
That's nice to hear, considering all the rumors that have now become fact, uh, you know, roaming through town, so thank you for doing that.
Camera, I'll tell you the, the weird chain of events that had me accidentally running across her and crossing paths and, and getting to the great conversations that we have had.
Awesome.
I'm a big fan of crop circles anyways, by the way. I found them fascinating when I was little, so, you know, that's okay too.
Uh, I, those are sort of my sort of community updates.
Alright, and I got uh quick ones. So Berlin takeover night next year will be May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Uh, now that I know that everything's involved, PEG won't panic, but asked me that question a week before the event. Um, Boston Kane Award will be presented to Mrs. Romelli tomorrow afternoon. Thank you Dee for the certificate.
You're welcome.
Got it here. We will present Mrs. uh Romelli with a little replica of the Boston cane. And our big Boston cane up there. Um, and I saw that uh at the mall, if people are interested. Uh, Santa arrives on November eighteenth, the tree is up. There is a winter market, uh, just November twenty fifth, December ninth. Pet photos uh with Santa, November twenty seventh and December fourth. Yeah, I figured you'd like that one.
I don't know if I could bring all three though, that's a handful.
Eh, eh, you know what, just mix them in with Lily and Jax, they'll never know. Um, for those who need it, there is a sensory Santa uh photos on December third. And another music beer craft on the Thursdays in December, uh, the seventh, fourteenth, twenty first and twenty eighth. From five thirty to eight, so head on down to the mall for the people that are like, oh my God, what's happening to the mall? It's dying. Here's your opportunity to go help it. And with that, energies tomorrow. I'll see you tomorrow night there, uh, Miss Amy, and I'll have an update at our next meeting. Alright, so, uh, we have a need for executive session. The board will enter into an executive sender session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, police union and under Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A six. For discussion and approval of minutes of the October sixteen twenty third, uh, twenty twenty three executive session under the same purpose. And which was to consider purchase exchange lease or value of real, uh, real estate properties, Rattlesnake Hill. And we'll return to open session only to adjourn. Take a vote.
Uh, Hawkins, aye.
Stone aye. Thank you, Mr. B.